Okay, we will now reconvene the Board of Trustees meeting and we're going back to new business, our Agenda Item B, which is an informational briefing by Navy Region Hawaii on their draft EIS for proposed continued use of state lands on Kauai for the Navy's Pacific Missile Range Facility and also its NASA's Ko Ke'e Park Geophysical Observatory. Chair just wants to say mahalo for reaching out. And you didn't reach out to us, I mean, you did reach out to us, we didn't reach out to you. And so we really, really appreciate you doing that. As our trustees are well aware, we created a permitted interaction group earlier this year that really focuses on the leases coming up. And our permitted interaction group is narrowly focused on the Army's land retention efforts, specifically at Puhakoloa on the Big Island and then Makua and the Kahuku Pōmohu Training Lands here on Oahu. So though our permitted interaction group does not cover all of the EISs from the other services that are working with the state for extension of their existing leases to include the Navy, the Air Force, we really appreciate the opportunity to hear your presentation. We know you gave presentations on Kauai while we were also on the island last week. We have our Kauai trustee here, Dana Huna, and we're looking forward to hearing what you have to present as the current draft comment period is open right now on the EIS. So with that being said, we recognize the Navy and Commander, and please introduce your team. Thank you for coming to the Office of Line Affairs, welcome.
Thank you.
Aloha Chair and trustees and the public that's called in. Really appreciate the opportunity that you've invited, you know, welcomed us all here today after we've reached out. It's really important to be able to have these conversations with as many in our community as we can as we go through this process. So today we'll be providing, my name is Megan Ostrom, I am with Navy Region Hawaii, the Director of Community Engagement. We have several here from the team, they'll introduce themselves as they go around and speak. We do have a few joining us online today. And we'll be sharing information about the draft environmental impact statement for both the NASA and Navy facilities that are being considered in this environmental impact statement for new real estate agreements with the state of Hawaii. And with that, we'll kick it off and get started. Captain Prince, our new Pacific Missile Range Facility Installation Commander, will provide a brief introduction and then we'll get into some of the details. Thank you, mahalo.
Great, thank you Megan. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick overview of what we intend to talk about today and we can go on to the next slide. Obviously, we want to focus mostly on the EIS at hand, but I wanted to give just a brief introduction of PMRF, what we do, why we feel it's important, and how we benefit the local community. So I'll take just a few minutes on that and then we'll pass it off to the experts that are working the EIS process. So this really just shows the scope and scale of the Pacific Missile Range Facility. We are a network of sensors essentially that provide the instrumented range facility. And this shows some of our extended op area. We're unique in both our geographic location and the capabilities that we provide. And when you put those two together, we provide a quite capable missile test range in place for fleet training in the Pacific. Next slide, please. This is just a brief overview of the land use that is being discussed as part of this proposed action. You'll see in the yellow is the lands under federal jurisdiction that would be the main base. The dark purple slivers that are adjacent to the main base, those are some of the leaseholds that are currently held and desired to be maintained. There's also some that are not directly adjacent to the base. One is Kamaklaa Ridge, just to the east of the main base, and then Makaha Ridge to the north. In the green colors are the Ko Ke'e Park Geophysical Observatory, which includes both easements and leaseholds up on Ko Ke'e. The largest portion of these shadings is the light purple, and those are easement areas for agricultural easements that provide a safety margin around the base during test launches or target launches, keeping that area clear and basically under agricultural use. Next slide, please. And then just a brief description of the range itself is really a combination of the sea space as well as the facilities that all come together, the different sensors and capabilities. So a lot of that is actually at the main base. So in the center picture there of barking sands is our airfield. It also holds a lot of our instrumentation, so our radar, our telemetry sites, and our range operations center. That's also where we would conduct any launches of either targets or missiles themselves. And as we mentioned the previous slide, much of that is land under federal jurisdiction, but there are leased lands adjacent to it that provide some supporting facilities to the operations on the base. Additionally, you can see pretty well in that slide or in that picture, the agricultural land off to the right in that picture that provides that safety margin when we are actually launching or testing, that we can keep those areas clear. Off to the right-hand side is our Kamaklaa Ridge, that's one of our lease areas. That's where we temporarily store ordinance as we're preparing for test events. On the left-hand side is Makaha Ridge, that is another suite of sensors, mostly radar sites providing telemetry data, communications, and flight termination systems for our missile tests. And those allow us to provide increased line of sight out over the water due to the elevation up there on Makaha Ridge. Ko Ke'e Park, I'll let the NASA team talk a little bit more of that, but we have, the Navy, PMRF, operates some supporting infrastructure on those land leases up at Ko Ke'e Park. The remaining three pictures are not really part of the discussion today, but just to give an overview of how we use them in the rest of the range. We do have some leaseholds on Nihao Island that provide additional sensors. We do have two multipurpose craft that are stationed or that are ported in Port Allen that provide missile or target deployment and recovery options for us. And then we have our mobile at-sea sensor that is actually stationed here at Fort Island that is towed out to the ocean, is able to provide additional telemetry radar tracking and flight termination system capabilities out at range far off the coast as needed. Not shown on this slide is our underwater range, and that's an array of passive sensors that basically provides high fidelity tracking for any submarines or subsurface targets, allowing us to again passively track those and provide an extra level of safety for operations being conducted on the range. Next slide, please. I'll briefly talk to our impact in the local community. If there are any questions on this, our CPLO, Ms. Kalana Mossman, is sitting right behind me and she'll be happy to answer any further questions on that. We do estimate we provide about $173 million in annual economic impact locally through our contracts and salaries of the employees. We are home to about 1,000 employees. We are the third largest employer overall on Kauai and we're the first in high-tech employment. We are pretty proud of our community outreach and we could talk much longer on some of that, but one thing I will stress is the recognition that the children in Kauai are one of our biggest assets as we try to home-grow this technology workforce out there. And actually, right now, we have five student interns that are participating on our range. Three of them are graduates of Kauai High School. So pretty proud of that involvement in the community and able to bring back that highly skilled workforce and maintain them on Kauai. That's all I have on this slide, next slide, please. And I'll turn it over to the NASA team, hopefully they're on the line.
I am, thank you Captain, I hope you can hear me in the room? Yes?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you so much. Aloha, my name is Sherry Miller, I am with NASA's Goddard Space Flight Center and I'm the NASA EIS Project Manager for this program. NASA holds a lease with the state of Hawaii, similar to PMRF does, for about 23 acres over six parcels at Ko Ke'e Park Geophysical Observatory and Ko Ke'e State Park. We have a use agreement with the Navy for five of those parcels. All of the instrumentation that's up there is receive only, so it's super quiet as far as an RF environment goes, which is really important for the type of data that we are collecting. KPGO is one of the key sites globally that collects long-term data for determining the Earth's position in space and its rotation as well as the Earth's gravity. All that information is super important. It's the bedrock of what is used for calculating the Global Positioning System or what we call GPS, what's beamed down into your smartphones or in your garments for fishing or anything that uses georeferencing and geo-positioning on the Earth. That data starts with the instrumentation that we have up at KPGO. The long-term data is also what helps us determine Hawaii's location on the globe. We know that the islands are moving and shifting, so if you're using a lat-long system versus the GPS system, you have a tendency to, over time, be off by as much as meters from where your location is. So that long-term data is critical to positioning. It's also used for satellite navigation as well as spacecraft navigation. So the data that's collected up there is critical for NASA and for scientists, but it also has very local and global significance as well. So I'm going to turn it over to the next slide.
Carrie, do we have you on the line? All right, we're trying to get our...
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
All right, aloha, we can hear you, thank you Carrie.
Okay, great, aloha. Mahalo for letting me call in from Big Island. And yes, I'm the EIS Project Manager Navy-side. This slide talks to the purpose and the proposed action. So Captain Prince showed you the slide of the lease and easement land held by Navy and NASA. And so the reason that we are doing this EIS, this is a state and a national environmental impact statement. It does fall under the state, Chapter 343, because of the use of state lands. And so this EIS is being written for Navy, NASA, and also for the Board of Land and Natural Resources. So the purpose statement is here and then the proposed action is to retain the use of the acreage 8,172. Again, a note on the acreage there, that 7,488 acres is easement, and again, that's restrictive use. So there's nothing actually being done on the ground there, it's just held for safety zones and also encroachments. Next slide, please. So in order to ensure that this environmental impact statement gives the Navy, NASA, and the board what they need to go into real estate negotiations, we have to do supporting studies. So we've conducted all new studies for this environmental impact statement, including natural resource surveys. So both at PMRF and KPGO, we conducted flora and fauna surveys. We also funded a year's worth of hori-bat surveys at both PMRF and KPGO. And a wetland delineation was conducted in the area where the ditches are, which is right up against barking sands. For archaeological and architectural resources, we also conducted an archaeological inventory survey at both PMRF and KPGO as well as an architectural resources survey at both of those locations. And then for cultural practices, we conducted a cultural impact assessment for both PMRF and KPGO that is included in the draft EIS as well as these other studies as an appendix to the EIS, so you can see that there. The CIA covers the Moku of Kona, and we did meet with the Aha Moku Council, members of the Aha Moku Council on Kauai a few weeks ago to discuss the CIA with them. They did give us one additional interviewee, so we will be interviewing Uncle Dennis. And we've also identified another individual that we will be interviewing that was identified during our draft EIS meetings, so we'll be doing that. And those interviews were conducted by Kaumaka. And we can go to the next slide. And the CIA does allow the state to conduct the Kapaa Kai analysis. Here listed on this slide is the page of the draft EIS where we have the disclosure of information that the state can use to conduct their Kapaa Kai analysis. After listening to the board meeting with the Army, we've decided that the final EIS, we're going to include the three steps to conduct the Kapaa Kai analysis. And so that will be updated in the final EIS. Next slide, please. And we've also been conducting these other consultations that are listed here on this slide. And we've been in contact with the OCCL regarding the Conservation District. So up at Makaha and KPGO, those are both Conservation District designated lands. And so we are in consultation with OCCL. And the emails that we received from them are in the draft EIS as well in the Regulatory Section Appendix. We can go to the next slide, please. In addition to, in EIS, we looked at 12 different resources. And all the mitigation that is from ongoing actions under the action alternatives will be carried forward. So there is a table in the draft EIS listed here on this slide that you can reference to see what that mitigation is that will be carried forward. And then in addition to this, Navy and NASA, we received scoping comments. And to address those scoping comments, we came up with a brand-new category, new to NEPA and HIPAA, the state and the federal policies, that's enhanced management measures. So these are taken very seriously by the Navy and NASA. And these propose additional protections for the INA. Those are listed in Table 5.2-1. We've already been moving forward with one of our enhanced management measures in developing a website that really showcases all of the great work that PMRF has been doing with the community. One of the things noticed during the draft EIS, public meetings and comments that we received, is that we understand that folks don't really know all of the great work that they're doing out there already. So we've developed a newsletter that's also going out to stakeholders quarterly. So if you go to the website, you can sign up for the newsletter. And it also allows people to just understand all the great things, but also the ideas of these enhanced management measures are to continue and to bring more community members that awareness and to continue that in an enhanced way. We move on to the next slide. So we did just hold our three public meetings last week. Those were on Kauai, in those three locations there. So we started out in Lihue on the east side, and then the next night we were on the west-south side in Keikaha, and then on the last night, we finished up north in Kapaa. And those meetings included poster stations, so folks at the beginning, from 5:00 to 6:00, could come in and talk to our subject matter experts, including talk to Captain Prince, Kaolana, myself, we were all there to discuss any questions or comments that folks had on the EIS, the draft EIS. We also conducted a presentation, about a 20-minute presentation to give an overview of the findings of the draft EIS. And then we had an oral comment period, three minutes per commenter in person, and we also had a live broadcast. So for the first hour, folks could type questions to our subject matter experts. And then at 6:00, they listened to the presentation, and then we took their oral comments as well, virtually. And next slide, please. And that's our question slide, thank you.
So mahalo for allowing us to share a little bit. We have a lot of members of our team here that are happy to answer any questions and just want to put it out there that if we run out of time today, no, you have a full schedule, our doors are always open and we look forward to continuing this conversation.
Okay, great, we'll open it up to questions. I'm gonna, I just want to ask one clarifying question, then I'll recognize our Kauai Island trustee, so he can go first since this is his Moku. But the Navy state land lease of, or the proposed lease, extension, new lease, 8,172 acres, looks like the majority of it is 7,488 acres, which is an easement, basically the monoplane on the right side of the road. And then on the left side, which is 684 acres, from looking at the map, and it looks like it's where the road bends, that looks like it's where the PMRF range operations building is, basically the bulk of the base where the runways are, not necessarily where the cottages are and where the, you know, that first gate where you go in, where like the Navy PX is. And it looks like this is where the airfield is and where the base is. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, that's correct, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So it is about where the south end of the runway begins is where the dark shaded purple, those leaseholds. Some of those are, there are some buildings that are on some of those lands. Some of those are really just to get us out to natural barriers where there would be an irrigation ditch or something where it actually makes sense to have a security fence, or in a lot of cases, we don't have fencing, but we would just have that ditch to provide some level of barrier there.
Yeah, and then the northernmost state lease parcel, it looks like, is it like a small sliver that continues along the road to the right of the yellow shaded area? And then that last kind of purple area, is that where the different missile sites are? Raytheon site and those different sites there or no? Is that, what's on that purple northernmost parcel?
That northernmost, there is one, I believe, missile assembly building that is on that land, and then a lot of it is clear land, really an access road to get up to the northern launch pad, which is actually on the lands under federal jurisdiction. And then most of the other launch sites would also be on the Navy-held land at this point.
Yeah, which is the yellow, the yellow land is what the Navy holds in Phi, right?
That's correct.
Sand dunes and a lot of where some of the EV issues come up, okay. Just for feedback for the presentation, I think that'll be helpful to specifically have a slide that expands where the actual state leaselands are to make it a little more understandable from like a Google Earth perspective, that it would show that it's the majority of your base is on state lease land. The main base, right, where the range operations building, basically everything on the Emilioa Road Gate is the base.
So sir, not quite, the preponderance of the main base is on the land under federal jurisdiction. There's another component of that main large dark purple area that is outside the fence line, so it's the area where the Kavaili Pump Station is. Under the existing terms of the lease, the Navy does fund the operation and maintenance of the Kavaili pumps contract through Agribusiness Development Corporation. But some of that's actually outside what we typically call the fence line.
But the PMRF range operations building is on state lease land?
There are a portion of operations facilities, yes. We can come back with more detail if that's desired.
That would be helpful, I can see where the roads are and what is on Phi simple land versus state land. I think for our beneficiaries, it would be important to know what Navy facilities is on state lease land. And you can't get that from this picture here, right? So, okay.
We do have additional, we do have additional detail in the EIS that is very specific, and we have some other slides that do offer some photos tied to each of these areas that we can provide in backup as well, to help provide that context.
Okay, great, okay trustee Huna.
Thank you Chair, and thank you to you all for being here. Living on Kauai, one of the biggest and most pressing issues that we have is the bombing. So this has to do with the bombing or practice. Will the Navy submit a study to Congress clearly outlining the pressing national security requirements for bomb training at Ka'ula as requested by the Hawaii Congressional delegation? That's my first one.
So that is actively being worked on by Pacific Fleet Command. So that comment from Senator Schatz did come to the Navy and that is actively being worked on right now. So we are focused on the land aspect of it, but understand the interrelated nature of all things and have been supporting our other counterparts throughout the Navy as they work those responses, including the importance of providing a complete response to have that understanding of the importance of the mission readiness opportunities that they are pursuing.
Thank you, can I ask one more?
Yeah, sure, just to provide context for our beneficiaries, right? Ka'ula Island is an uninhabited island that is owned by the US government and it's under the jurisdiction of the United States Navy. And I think you use approximately 10 acres of the southern tip of the island for training. And if, you know, for our beneficiaries, that island is a seabird sanctuary that is southwest of Nihao. And it's important.
So my follow-up question is, is there any cultural sites on Ka'ula?
So one thing we can offer, and the folks here are really focused on the land use as pertains to the leases and easements, we can offer a follow-up with the team that's actually working on that, because there are Section 106 consultations underway for the Ka'ula Island effort. The folks in the room are not the folks working that, and we can set up a follow-on on that.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah. I mean, they're really here to focus on the EIS piece. Unfortunately, you represent the entire United States Navy right now, and so we're going to ask you whatever questions that our trustees want to ask you of the Navy. So anyways, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm so sorry, I got a couple more, but I just want to ask one more, I promise. No, just living there, I just, in your presentation, when you guys started off, you mentioned something about a submarine training facility area. Can you show me on the map where that is, where would that be?
So the underwater instrumented range would extend westward from the main base and then it's a series of underwater cables that would extend up to the north, out into the water.
So when we say submarine training is like getting a license to man a submarine? Or is this like war games or like is there more submarines that interact at these places? I mean, I just watch Top Gun and, you know, if you go to Miramar, you can see all those jet planes, you want to be the best fighter pilots, you go to, you know, Top Gun. So where do you go for submarine training or where is the Top Gun for submarine training?
So a large portion of that would likely be on our range where we're able to track with fairly high fidelity both submarines and any underwater targets. We at the range obviously don't have any submarines, but we do provide targets both above and below the sea that the different military forces could track, detect, track, and engage.
We have a large amount of whales being, I mean, they just come up to the land and, you know, killer whales and everything. I mean, I don't know if there's any impacts that connect all of this, but are you guys doing any studies to make sure that we're protecting our... but are you guys doing any studies to make sure that we're protecting our sea animals as well?
Yes, so that's a, that brings up, I think, a relevant point about the EIS. So while the body of this environmental impact statement does focus on the use of the state lands, under HIPAA, there is a portion called cumulative impacts. And so while this, the main body does not address those impacts, the Navy has other environmental studies that do. And those are incorporated by reference into this environmental impact statement. And one of the things the team that Carrie is leading is working on is how to extract, you know, relevant but concise portions of that data into the cumulative impact section of this document. So while it's incorporated by reference, we do acknowledge there's a lot of data, even just from the studies of the things on the lease land. But the Hawaii California Training and Testing Range Environmental Impact Statement is underway right now. So that will be completed probably the end of this calendar year. And that's where those offshore impacts are really looked at, that's those activities that you're asking about. So, so yes, they're being evaluated and yes, being updated this calendar year.
Yeah, one of the concerns that we have is always with cleanup. You know, there's always, people are okay to bomb Ko'olavi or whatever, but we're in situations where we still got to do cleanup and massive cleanup. And the environmental impacts has a lot to do with everything that we're talking about today. But I just want to thank you guys for being here and facing us. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Just to follow up on trustee Uno's question, so the offshore, you know, subsurface training area, that is a right-of-way lease that the Navy has, is that correct?
Currently, it is a right-of-way easement.
When does the easement, right, when does that expire?
Right-of-way permit, excuse me, it's a right-of-way permit.
So that will expire at the same time the other easements. The Navy is currently planning to use a different instrument to maintain the use. And that's not the entire underwater range. That's a small portion of where the cables run out from shore into the range.
Okay, that's important to know, trustee as well, is that the Navy currently leases or has a right-of-way easement?
It's classified as a permit right now. There were multiple different tools that were used back when these agreements were made.
But essentially what you described as Top Gun, which I think is at like Navy Fallon Air Station today, that is submarine Top Gun. That is where, my understanding is, all naval captains that come for their final certification for naval subsurface warfare do it there. And it's hundreds of miles is this subsurface range that has multiple sensors that can allow future submarine commanders to fast attack submarine commanders and whatnot to train there. So that's, that's what's happening on the ocean. But your concerns about maritime life and whales are warranted, absolutely. Okay, questions, trustees?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Aquino.
Then, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for coming and joining us today. We appreciate it. Have you or the NASA done consultation with our state Hawaii preservation department with regard to Hawaii revised statutes, part six, that deals with the historic preservation?
Yes, so we, as part of our, one of the consultations that we are doing includes consultation with the state historic preservation.
Is that complete or are you going through that?
It is underway. Carrie, could you provide a brief update as to where we're at with that? And the, you know, that relates to the new studies that we did as well?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. These are underway. So with 6E, we have the letter going from DLNR to SHIPD regarding the 6E. And the AIS is being updated for, to be compliant with 6E. So that is underway. Yes, that is correct.
What is your target for completing that and will it be made possible?
Let me see here. Yeah, let's see here. Let me look at the schedule really quick. Completion on that is going to be, March 2026.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we did have the SHIPD's office out as part of our tour last week. So they were able to come out to PMRF and KPGO, so some of the staff in the SHIPD's office.
Thank you, trustee Susan.
Yeah, mahalo, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for being here today. I have a question. Is the Navy or NASA willing to include OHA in lease negotiations or discussions? Given, you know, OHA's constitutional role in management and disposition of public lands? Is that something you guys will entertain?
So I think that's a question we'll need to take back to our leadership for action because there's a lot to be determined still with how those negotiations are going to move forward. But we can take that for action and follow up with you on that.
Just to put it on the radar, I mean, we would like to be, and I think we should be a part of those. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think to follow up with trustee Susan on that, you know, the reason why that's so important for OHA and this board is, and I haven't gone deep into your EIS, but of the proposed state lease lands, the over 8,000 acres you want to retain, what exact acreage of that are ceded lands? You know, for beneficiaries, the reason why this lease and the many leases across the state have August 2029 expiration dates is because this was a condition of the Admissions Act in 1959, where the US government was required within five years to the day of admission to identify and account for all ceded lands that were transferred to the state at the Admissions Act. And of course, OHA has a direct involvement in the ceded lands corpus and as well as our beneficiaries that we, in our Lahu'i that we represent. So knowing exactly how much of the proposed land retention is our ceded lands is very important for us because of OHA's constitutional and statutory obligations towards the Ceded Lands Trust, the Public Lands Trust, the funds, the pro-rata share that we and our beneficiaries receive from those leases. And that's why his question is so important. So we know that DLNR is probably the accepting agency for your EIS and it's who you deal with all the time. But we are highly encouraging you to work together with us in either an official or an unofficial capacity. And part of that is reaching out to us and coming here today. And so we really appreciate it.
And we welcome your comments. I mean, that's one of the reasons why it's so important that you made time for us to come during this comment period and share this information with you. We do have some information in the EIS about how the Navy came to be present on the land out there in West Kauai. And welcome your review and feedback in that section. And then also in the different sections of the EIS that address land use, economic impact, please look closely at those sections as well. We look forward to hearing your comments. Mahalo.
Trustee Akon.
Hello, a series of mana'o and questions. But first of all, aloha pumehana, mahalo for sharing with us today and joining us here at our table. I realize that at times maybe our questions or the sentiment of our Hawaiian community as well as our local community may often be heavy, kamaa, it's challenging to hear. But I ask you to please, please consider that, you know, when our people are sharing this mana'o with you, that you're able to see them and hear them as if they're members of your own ohana. That oftentimes you simply want access to their ancestral homelands and to be able to care for their kupuna that have come before them. So mahalo in advance for taking into that consideration. I also want to acknowledge that I see Noe Kalipi here joining us. And I am very familiar with Noe as she has been a longtime team member staffer of my grandfather in his service, in serving as a US senator in Washington DC on behalf of Hawai'i. So I think you have a really great asset within your team. And I highly recommend you to make use of what knowledge she has and what access of knowledge and connections she has to our community. So with all of that, first and foremost, our board chair had touched on one of the points that I wanted to discuss as well as Keone here, is these are our crown and government lands of our Hawaiian kingdom. So part of that understanding is, our people, yes, they want access, but also we have, within these lands, it is, yes, our constitution mandated kulianna for OHA to be involved. So part of our advocacy on behalf of our Hawaiian people as well as the rights and the protection of our lands and waters and skies of hawaiinee is to be able to speak on that. And advocacy is where we are asking various entities that are housed in our environment to be able to work hand in hand with us. So that was touched on, but I really, I really encourage you folks to be able to work with, whether it's DLNR, BLNR, our local communities, our native Hawaiian communities, because it's as simple as putting the keha, the call out to the lineal descendants, to those that have the cultural understanding of the place. So for instance, we were on Kauai last week as we were holding our site visits. Mahalo to Dan and his team for making that possible and all that, all those that had made that possible. And with our site visits, our community island meetings and our board meetings there, before we flew out, I took the time to drive out to this area that you're speaking of today. And as a local Hawaiian person that is driving past this area, one often feels that we are, it's a place that we see from afar. We don't always have access to these places. So there's often a feeling there. So I share that with you because something for you to consider, and maybe you're doing this already, but have it where you have our host culture, our native wines, where you welcome them onto these lands and that you're able to host them, whether it's an event, and help them understand what your role is, what you're doing. But also I recommend is that we have such a beautiful Hawaiian language. It's a romantic language that is meant to just roll off your tongue. I'm recommending that if you can have it where you have a cultural advisor or a person that is immersed in our olaloma kohine, our mother tongue. I know that we have amazing immersion schools on Kauai, that you take the time for cultural training of your team. Any member that comes and serves on the base in your place of work and service, that you have cultural training on how to enunciate, pronounce certain Hawaiian words, have the knowledge of the place names of that area. For instance, I saw on the screen Barking Sands, Port Allen, when I drove past on that day and I saw the signage of Port Allen, as a Hawaiian person, I naturally feel, what was the name of this place once before? Wouldn't it be good for the land acknowledgement to be there? So what I'm recommending is that you have signage, perhaps with QR codes, and that you acknowledge the names and have it where it's highlighted, the original place name or place names. And if you have cultural advisors that are providing you this mo'olelo, highlight that, acknowledge them. And you can also use that as a reference so that there's an understanding to those that come to be in that place and learn of the place, that they have that cultural understanding of the oftentimes sacredness of a place. Mahalo, so I have more mana'o and questions. So specifically, what is the timeline for development of the PMRF Access Management Plan to enable cultural use and access to our wahipana? So for instance, we have the Nohili Dunes and we have Tuhe'au, as well as the shorelines on base.
I'd like to actually pass this to Kalana Mossman, our Community Plans Liaison Officer. And she can speak a little bit to what we're currently doing and what we're looking to expand doing there as part of your mana'o you shared with us earlier.
Aloha.
Can you hear me?
And just before you start, Kalana, we're going to wrap up this presentation at noon. So we can move on to other things. But we can also send all of our questions to them and I'm sure they'll do their best to get back to us. So, all right, go ahead.
Hi, aloha mai ka ko. Can you all hear me? Okay, I'm Kalana Mossman. I'm the Community Planning Liaison for Pacific Missile Range Facility. And thank you for all of your questions, especially as a native Hawaiian myself. I do feel it's extremely important for us to be able to support everything Hawaiian, right? And I'm grateful because we've had leadership that has actually consulted with our team, those in the community. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things in some of your questions. So some of you, who's familiar with Majors Bay? You know, Dan, yep, Kai, yep, Surf Spot, it's no longer called that. It's now called Waipua'abe. We've changed the name, we've taken it down. And we did this because we started to do the research and we realized that's not the name of the place. We thought it was Waikapua, Waikapua. And so we actually consulted Ikalani Flores, talked with us about it. And he said, because we invited him out, he had been out there with my late Papa, Anderson Koholuiki Kelawano and Margaret Ipoalani way back when he was a younger, younger lad, I shall say. But he was out there and he talked with us about it and he said, you know, it's not called Majors Bay and it's not even called Waikapua Bay. We literally had the sign up, ready to go for unveiling with the community three days before and we, he said, it's not that, it's Waipua'aha, it's a place of the pig. And so our captain at the time said, you know what, then we need to change it. We need to make this happen. So we kind of, you know, we didn't have the letters in time. We spray painted them, put it up there, but made it work out. And he came out and he spoke of the place, Ikalani Flores, he flew over, shared the history and why it's so important to get back to those place names. So I completely understand with what you're saying. We also have the lineal descendants Na'uhana Papa'oumana of the area who work in tandem with our archaeologists on installation. We also have biologists. But if EV are exposed to coastal erosion, windy erosion, that's what we're finding. Sometimes we'll have people walking on the beach or we'll have like our security officers doing their checks. And there's like, hey, you need to know right against Nohili Dunes, there's some EV kupuna. Our archaeologists will go out there, they'll call the lineal descendants and say, hey, consult. What would you like us to do? Would you like to inter in place? We have built Na'aluakupapa'ou'ou Nohili Crypt on site where we then re-enter the EV based on the family's recommendations. We will re-enter our archaeologists if they're still safe. We will just find a way to re-enter. We have consulted with Hale'aloha Ayau, who has brought He, Man and Kalehua have come out to installation. We have consulted with them as well on the proper handling of the EV kupuna. So I really appreciate you sharing that and how important it is. As far as sailors or folks coming on base, we have what we call an indok. I'm part of that, being able to literally share with them, it's not called snow cone, it's shave ice. I do touch up a little on the importance of history, culture, 1893, a lot of that. They do get that information from me as they come onto installation so they can get a better understanding of where they're at.
I do recommend that for the ohana as well that travel with them so that they have a better appreciation of the place that they're calling home at that time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's a great idea. Thank you.
So speaking of the names again, so in my research, and I'm open to the lineal descendants mana'o, because oftentimes, like you mentioned, there are place names, but there might be variations of names. So that could be acknowledged as well because through time, sometimes the, what the land and sea provides adjusts. So the names might adjust and fluctuate as well. So sometimes it's not a wrong name, but maybe it's said in a different way at a different time by a different ohana. So with Barking Sands, the name that I found is Keone'kani'ono'ili.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then with Port Allen, Ele'ele, or Ele'ele. So I welcome you to make the adjustments for the signage as well. And this is what I share with our team. When we are going out in the community, when we're talking about our, what's known as the public land trust or ceded lands, we must always preface it by referring to them as, we could say, our native whiner. These are the Hawaiian kingdom, our crown and government. We could say our native wine or these are the Hawaiian kingdom, our crown and government lands, also known as the public lands of the public land trust. So people understand the breadth of the place. So you can still refer to it as a name that you know, but maybe preface it by calling it by the name price, the Hawaiian name. So um.
I I also just wanted to address the the access. So um we've had a lot of, we've had about sixty, um the kupuna council and um. Uh luwa uh uh our our uh cultural practitioners that came out. Uh they've come out into, we bring them into the dune area because they wanna do um huaka'i and their traditional practice. Kailua High School was just out there because uh there Kumu wanted to teach them about the place. The sites that they are dancing about, so about thirty of them just came out this year. Kamamea Schools comes out quite frequently. Uh to do huaka'i out there. Um uh we recently had uh KCC and their Hawaiian Club come out. We've had Halau come out, um we open it and so we we are uh really um trying to get out there to. Our our native Hawaiian organizations and our Ohana, you know, if you wanna come on, contact me and we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
And and also we have access to the base, folks can get um uh recreational passes to come out and see the sunset or eat out there.
Because my understanding too is when it comes to parking, that um oftentimes our people have to park at a certain area and then walk. A fair distance. So I I also recommend that proper parking be provided as well. So um. With that, um what does general access look like for our lineal descendants? So they have to contact. Can't contact you to be able to have access or do they have automatic access?
Well, if if we have uh specific operations at that time, you know, we're using the easement areas, the areas that we're using are, we're doing a mission. At that moment, it it obviously wouldn't become available. However, um. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you know, they'll reach out and they'll say, hey, we just wanna come out, you got a dates, we'll shoot some dates out and then and we'll bring them on installation. So um as far as the general community, anyone, we have a lot of Hawaiian, we have a lot of fishermen, we have a lot of. Folks that just come out for recreation, to come on the beach, to go to Shenanigans and have lunch, so. They can come out and get a pass from our um MWR at the gate there and they can access. They'll get uh given a card where they can just come out.
Something to consider is those, especially lineal descendants of that area that can show you their. That they're lineal descendants and that their kupuna are resting there, that maybe you have some kind of clearance where they are. Able to have some kind of. Access pass, so they don't have to always reapply, but that they are on a a list of those that are. Able to have the authorized access and that that can be expedited, so it's not so much of a process for them. Okay, so regarding your acreage, okay, so um. Regarding, this will be, I'll combine it with acreage and looking at when you might be vacating. How are you able to, are you are, are you able to minimize your footprint there? Do you really need all that acreage to do the kuliana that you're set to do? And when are you looking to, is there a plan in place to? No longer be in service there?
Yeah, yeah, so one note on the acreage, um we are applying to retain the same acreage that we. Currently have in leasehold and easement.
But is it necessary? Do you need all of that land? Cause we, as a people, part of our advocacy is, our people want our land back.
Yeah, so on a functional level, yes. Uh if you look at the area in the picture of Makaha Ridge, for instance, that's one of the larger chunks of leasehold with instrumentation on it. There's not really a lot of lo- land outside of where the instrumentation sits and the where the geography allows to shrink it, for instance. So it it, there's not a lot of opportunities to shrink it down because the footprint's already relatively compact relative to what's there.
And is there um a path forward in terms of when it would make sense to vacate?
So in terms of the environmental impact statement, one of the alternatives that we look at is um the. Situation in which that a lease does not continue and um the Navy would not, no, would no longer be on those parcels. The terms and conditions of our lease do dictate um how that would happen and 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 what would need to be removed. Um as far as the the timeline with that and what actions would be associated. Uh that would need to be worked out through that process with the Department of Land and Natural Resources. But that is only speaking to the um parcels in which there are real estate agreements that not does not necessarily speak to the land. Um which is currently under federal um federal jurisdiction, um so that yellow or um if you were to look in the. The booklet that we handed out, um it does have a zoomed in, it's kind of the the white um area. The the Navy would need to evaluate um how that would change the functionality of of that area for the mission.
Great, and on that note, we're gonna conclude your presentation. Wanna thank uh you for coming. Trustees, I know there are unanswered questions, I have somebody that get to ask as well, we'll compile all of those and send those to. Send those to you, okay? Sounds great. Um and just for reminder for our beneficiaries, the public comment period is open right now. Uh up until August seventh to provide comments on the draft EIS. Talking to our chief advocate. We will be submitting uh comments by the August seventh um. Uh deadline, and so we look forward to uh digging deeper into your EIS and and providing um. Uh our comments from the Office of Wine Affairs. But thank you so much for coming, we sincerely appreciate your time and and mahalo nui loa. Best of luck. Take a quick recess just so we can thank everyone. Okay, trustees, we're gonna jump right back in, um. We have uh, it's like a trend of running all day meetings, no can, yeah? Chair, no can, okay, great. So what we're gonna do is is uh and I I'm guessing there's unanimous consent here. Is we're just gonna talk um about two more things on status of all activities. As relates to the executive succession plan, specifically Kapo'ana to the COO. Since you, since you made that announcement for us earlier, kind of the general one, when we might have a COO starting. And then um we'll talk about the fiscal year staff salary implementation plan update. The rest of the things, we'll 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 punt them to. A um future board meeting, that way we'll take a a quick maybe thirty minute lunch. Come back and um and then allow our Kapo'ana to um. To do uh her first year um uh. Evaluation update, which which the vice chair will uh will preside over. Is is that okay with everyone? And if we can get to that, which would include um the quick lunch break by one, then um hopefully we will be done. By two, at the latest. Okay, so let us just um jump right to item agenda number six on the executive succession plan. Um and I I would rather not dig into um. Let me pull it up. For now, we can save it for another um another meeting because it'll have a longer conversation and this would be the. Um succession plan from CEO to COO, succession plan for ELT, succession plan for department directors. Um I think we can hold that, but since the COO position is really important, um and we do have a transition there. If Kapo'ana, you you sent out a memo and if you can give us an update on that, um I think that would be important and then we can jump to the salaries.
Chair, before before um she starts, I wonder if um the trustees can get the different plans like. The um family leave implementation and the telework plan. So that we can study it and have intelligent discussions at the table. But when they give, when when we're, we're, we receive it before we have our meeting.
Sure.
No more not night, enough time to review it.
Yep, that's a great point. So and for that very reason, we'll move it to another board meeting, probably um where we have our August. Seventh, seventh, we'll plan on the seventh. Okay. Okay, Kapo'ana.
Okay, mahalo, so um. It bec- I became aware that, you know, I think this mic is on too, I I don't know what's happening.
Oh, can you take the handheld?
And then maybe, I don't know if, maybe the room volume is up really high as well. Um. So it came to my attention that part of my contract is uh CEO Pohana that. Every year I am required to submit to the Board of Trustees uh succession plans. Um now that I'm aware of it, I did uh rectify that and I did submit um succession plans. Well, um from CEO to COO, executive team members and then a separate plan for departments or rectors. They're essentially the same. Um and and we have been doing these things, but we haven't codified it. Um so now that's what we have done and so the the schedule that I will be on um will be at the end of every. Fiscal year, I will make sure to review, refresh, and if there are any anything additional that. Um needs to be included, I'll make sure that those things are added. Um so. The document that you have in your um your packet basically describes that there are different triggers um in which a succession plan would occur. In this particular case, you know, Kehau did resign, so we we had um advance notice. And so that would be considered like a planned departure. Um so there are key objectives that I've listed here on why we would want a succession plan. Um and then there is an internal transition um process of kuliana. Um you know, unfortunately, we're not gonna have an overlap um with. Our exiting COO and our our new COO, but I will tell you that Kehau has been extremely gracious in making herself available. Um to our incoming COO um. Over the next week, if they can find time to to meet and um she will provide whatever um. Information she can. Um she has also agreed that once the new COO comes on board. That she will continue to make herself available for questions and and any other um kukua that might be required. Just so that we have continuity of of support. Um so. What I've listed here is a transition period, so there is uh thirty days. So actually what we're looking at here is if the CEO were to transition out and um it would um my. Position as COO would have to be assumed by the COO and typically as the deputy administrator, that would be the cadence. That the deputy administrator, also known as COO, would step into um my position. So I list here um basically what would occur over the thirty day period, um internal communications. So again, these things are not gonna be new to you, um as Kehau has um made her notice known to me. You know, I do email the Board of Trustees notifying you folks of the transition. Um what's going to happen with Kehau's exit and because there is a a gap. Of thirty days uh before the new COO will start, uh we have the kuliana. Split between two of our senior directors. So Hailema Farden, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, will oversee. Um over that month's period, um our communications, our operations and our IT. Paya and Elena Farden, our Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation, will provide oversight. Of the other Paya, which include advocacy, RNE, uh community engagement. That's it? Okay, mahalo. And and because we can only have one signing authority, that will be Elena Farden. So if um in my state I cannot, you know, sign off, it will be Elena um for the COO. Uh let's see. So once, you know, once um. The trustees are made um made aware of that transition, then HR and communications does. Assist in doing in all staff communications to announce the transition. Um so folks were made aware. Of what that transition is gonna be and then as applicable, one week of the transition, which is coming up. We would notify any uh respective stakeholders, which Kehau will identify on who should be um. You know, so maybe like the cultural working group, cause I know Kehau works very closely with that, but she will have a list of stakeholders that she will reach out to. And um she will let know that she will be transitioning out and who the new contacts will be. Um I do have here on the next page just a communications timeline. And any additional considerations, but pretty straightforward. And again, these are things that we currently do, I just hadn't codified it. In a document. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll start. Um just for trustees um knowledge, just like the CEO said. Um this is part of her contract, um that she shall provide the board with a plan for the orderly succession and continuity of all executive positions. Including the CEO position at least annually. And so now we know that annually will be basically on the fiscal year.
Yes, Chair, at the end of the fiscal year, then that way um it'll be effective July one.
Okay, great. And I don't know if if a succession plan existed um from Colin Kippen or.
I did not receive.
From nobody, right? So I think um, you know, for whatever reason, this was included in the in 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 the contract and. You were starting with nothing, right? You didn't have a template for a succession plan. So my my advice for the trustees would be, you know, the. The our Kapo'ana provided, you know, several templates of what a succession plan would look like, basically starting from scratch without a succession plan to. To model after. Um I have feedback and comments on on and how I think it can be improved. And I I'm 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 sure maybe you you do as well. We'll save those comments for a future board meeting because we wanna, we wanna establish. What the contract requires, which is a solid succession plan for all executive team members, for you and for whoever sits in. Those seats in in the future, so we can provide them a good template. Um so we'll save that for um an another time and and I think the board. At some point should uh wh- whether we ratify what a succession plan looks like, we it, we codify it, including to the executive. Policy manual, so it probably would come before us in the form of an action item, which is what I would suggest. And we have a really good product for you moving forward. Um.
I I really appreciate that, mahalo.
Okay. Uh any questions on what was presented? Okay, then I'll um I'll ask a question. So I'm just gonna give you feedback, Kapo'ana, on um on what you just um. Uh described for the COO position and I think part of the succession plan is because we. We were um having a COO. That was departing at the end of the month and we're we're unsure of uh who was gonna be. Um overseeing uh the Office of Wine Affairs, whether it was in that position or in your absence. um overseeing uh the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, whether it was in that position or in your absence. I do have concerns about what you've proposed for this coverage period um in the CEO position and and it um you know, specifically um pertains to the decision to have two senior executive leaders here at OHA who also happen to be married couples that are overseeing a significant portion of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs during this transition time. So I guess my question is, I know we have a policy in our employee handbook about hiring family and we have nepotism policies, but do we have a policy in place that allows for ma- married couples to share co-management roles? Um, and I'll quote from your memo, coordinate regularly on a cross-functional areas that pertain to the oversight of not all OHA staff, but a significant amount of OHA staff.
There's nothing in our our policy manual um that speaks to um employees who are married that would be managing or providing oversight separately. They don't report to one another. Um, they currently are colleagues on our ELT. There there would be no difference in what they're doing. It it's a a big task to take on six pia. And so in a very short interim of thirty days, um I thought it would make sense to split them up, um to split the pias up to to make it more manageable. Again, you know, there's a lot going on in the organization and I'm not trying to kill anybody um with overloading them. I want to be able to provide our pia adequate support before we get a new COO. Um, but again, our Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation and Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs operate in the same capacity now overseeing their individual depart- um divisions. Nothing changes, except they're just providing additional oversight for thirty days to pia.
This is just me speaking in my opinion. I mean, I would prefer if it was you selected another individual like the SNI Director, a Senior Director, does oversee a significant pia already, so that would make sense. Um, the other position supervises no one. One, there is no one in that. So to now put that individual in charge of three pia, um I I would suggest looking at looking at someone else. And it's it's internally, I think it's also optically externally. I don't think it's a good look for for this interim period. Now, I know you have a CEO coming on August second. Start date?
Hello, my, yeah, I wanted to correct that. It's September second.
September, so we are looking at at least a thirty day window. I mean, my other question would be the last day for the COO is what day?
End of the month, so.
Their specific date?
Yeah, July thirty.
July thirty first, so that individual is here on July thirty first or not here? Okay, how is here that day?
Yes.
Okay, so starting August first, this new memo takes effect.
Yes.
But the Senior Director of Hawaiian Culture refers in Tahiti. And you're in Tahiti.
Mm-hmm.
So at Senior Director of SNI is now in charge of the entire Office of Hawaiian Affairs? I was just asking. I wouldn't know who in charge during that time.
The plan is he'll be back before my last day. I can't remember the exact day, but he will take over coverage on the first as the person in charge. Sorry.
Okay, I mean my concern is that I don't think it's ideal. I think optically and in practice, it's not a best practice for a state agency um who is always being looked at from a conflict of interest, whether it's real or perceived. Um, and it can be highly highly scrutinized.
What is the conflict, sir?
The conflict, I believe, just to clarify, is that you have two senior directors from the same household now responsible for a significant amount of OHA staff over the course of a month and receiving a ten percent compensation boost. Just to be clear, that's what you're asking for in your memo?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Kina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in light of the fact that our conversation has moved from policy to specific personnel, I'm wondering if it should be conducted i- in confidence.
Well, I mean, this is a this is a memo that she that the Chair CEO transmitted to the whole board, so.
Well, I I agree that certain aspects of this, such as the policy structure, are are public and for us to discuss at the board, but our conversation is now moving to include individual personnel and their personal circumstances, including their salary level. And I think out of respect that that should be discussed outside of public view.
I think it's also important for our staff that are watching this and trying to understand who will be supervising them the entire month of August. Um, it's important for them to also understand what we're talking about. And we've we I didn't do this memo. This is a memo that came from the CEO. This is her decision.
Well, I do appreciate that and I agree with you that we want our staff to understand what is taking place and we want them to have confidence. But I think our staff will also understand that when we talk about individuals, that we protect that in the way we would protect all our staff.
Okay. All right.
Chair, if um if I may, um I'd like to ask Kehau Poo to also um provide mahalo.
Well, I I just wanted to share that I did make my direct report. So technically I have seven, um including Lawa A. So it's just the directors, right, who report directly to me of the six pia that they oversee. So they would be the direct reports. I did inform them a few weeks ago about the the plan, because you know, we like make sure things are covered. So they are very aware. I think that the split makes sense, um especially as SNI is already, you know, collaborating quite a bit with research and evaluation. We're moving into communications as new programs are being designed and getting ready to be rolled out, like um like Aha'ou Pio and the DC Fellowship Program. So there is already high levels of collaboration that has begun, that have begun, that have started. Um, so I think this will just help to deepen that, you know, deepen those relationships. Um, sorry, so I'm thinking Elena, yeah, and and provide some continuity. And it'll also help as they kokua in transitioning in the the new COO who I have told Stacy like, yeah, I I want things to be successful here. I want my staff to be successful. So I have made myself available. I'm working on my transition plan for him and I'm even thinking about my first day, which, you know, what what did that look like? What was? I I swear I was hung up on the org charts for weeks, but I'm doing my best to put a plan together for the new COO. I'm gonna make myself available. And then also transition plans for Hailema and Elena. Um, I guess I, you know, and I don't necessarily see conflict in the management of the teams. Um, also, I I have some really great directors. I think I made some good hires here. They're high functioning, you know, high level quality of work. They work hard, each and every one of them. Um, so I'm not too worried about them not getting the support that they need. And then as for when, you know, the majority, when Stacy and and many of you are on the trip, you know, that's another reason why I committed to staying to the end of the month, because I knew we needed that coverage for that time. I talked to Everett, because we started going down the line like, okay, so if I go, Hailema goes. This was before I knew I was gonna transition out. Um, we knew like, hey, we need somebody on on point. Um, you know, to Mahalama the org, so um it will be myself until the thirty first. I'm here and then um oh, you're back already? Because yeah, Everett was gonna and then Everett is back on the thirty first as well, so he would be covering that last Friday, um August first, before you folks return.
Okay, thank you. I um, so this is my opinion only. I believe the the decision and the memo you issued lacks essential safeguards, transparency protocols, and governance clarity. And I think it can potentially create functional vulnerabilities and perception risks. And then to trustee Akina's um comments, we can go into executive session and we can table this for a different conversation, but through the last six months, we made public salaries often. And staff talked and testified about the Chief of Staff's salary in public view, so no one held back on those. So we gotta hold hold the same standard. I hope you understand that.
I I would agree with you that there's no problem in identifying the salaries of our employees, which are public knowledge anyway. I'm sorry if that sounded like that was my point, that that wasn't. That was just one example of our moving from just discussing policy into more circumstantial information about employees. And that's what I think we need to protect in terms of privacy.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I didn't issue the memo, so I didn't put us in this position.
I.
You're not recognized. Yeah. Anyone else? Trustee Suzo?
I agree with what Kai is saying. I also agree with what trustee Akina is saying. But I just want to make clear, there's no policy currently, so we're not discussing policy, trustee Akina. Just to make that clear. Um, I I I think this overall, I think maybe we just need to look at the what the suggestion is. And and every time we come to the table, Stace, okay, how or anybody who approaches this table, it's always a suggestion from the board. It's a direction that the board wants to move in, you know, and and it's it's not not so much of a directive. It's just suggestions on how we're all looking out for this organization, right? So what whatever issue is today's issue, tomorrow's issue, we're all making suggestions. So I would ask you, Stace, to be open, right, to what the suggestion potentially would be. We'll have a greater discussion potentially in executive session, if that's what it's gonna be, trustee Akina. And we can decide as a board what the best direction to go is based on a memo or based on other issues. But I would always ask you, Kapo Hana, to be open to what this board is suggesting. And I think that's what I want to say. So mahalo. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number nine um to wrap up the open agenda of the status of OHA activities. So this is gonna be the fiscal year twenty twenty six staff salary implementation plan. Welcome, Cory. So, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, you recognize, Cory, if you can give us an update. Um, a lot of work was put in uh by our Vice Chair and our Chair Emerita on the ad hoc salaries, including yourself and supporting staff. Um, um, additional pay increases were implemented at the request of the Chief Executive Officer, which leveled um OHA salaries. Um, you know what? I I'm gonna uh just say this on the record as well. Um and I think it is uh important and just since you're here. Um, just so our trustees know, and this is something that I think we need to address, um our CEO also is deserving of a pay increase. And that is um in her contract. And and I will read what her contract says. Um the co- the CEO's compensation is set at uh two hundred thousand dollars annually. Uh, however, this amount may increase based upon a satisfactory performance evaluation, uh which which the vice chair is working with all of you to complete as soon as possible, um which which should have been due months ago. And consistent with HRS Section twenty six fifty two three, shall include step increases in line with the Commission on Salaries Report and Recommendations to the Twenty Twenty Four Legislature. So that report is done. It was issued in March of twenty twenty five and um uh we need to, Cory, take a look at what I've I've tried to look at it um in in detail and see what tier director, tier one, tier two, would um correlate to the Chief Executive Officer's position. Um, but we need to correlate what that is and calculate what that pay increase needs to be, so that we are in compliance with the contract. While the first part of that is the performance evaluation, which um we are conducting right now. But um, so that's something else that we need to include in our budget and 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 is contracted. We are contractually obligated to do that. And the Kapo Hana is uh, you know, worked very hard to to earn that and she deserves that. So we need to do that. But regardless, can you give us an update on the implementation of staff salaries as um relates to the uh the budget?
Yeah, so um, yeah, again, thank you to everyone who worked on the ad hoc working group um and all of the support staff, especially, you know, to Summer and Rochelle for for the um long hours. Um, so in the last, say, two weeks or so, HR has been reviewing um all of the the amounts and we did make some um adjustments for consistency purposes, but all of those um adjustments have been reviewed. Uh, we also discussed those with Kapo Hana, um Kapo Nui CFO. Um, and all of the PRFs were routed and approved, all of the adjustment amounts except for um one, because we're still uh needing to get HDOT approval. Um, have already been inputted um and should be reflected in the August fifth payroll. So effective July one as um planned.
So effective August fifth?
It'll it'll be included in the August fifth payroll.
Okay.
Except for that one that we're still.
Are there any that any OHA staff that lag in the pay period that wouldn't not be?
No, the only one is the one um Hlid.
Yeah.
Uh, because we gotta get their approval, but um all the others have already been inputted and should be reflected in the upcoming.
Is it is it um is the newly established pay rates once it begin August, is it retroactive to July first?
Yes, it'll be for the July first through the fifteenth payroll, which is paid out on August fifth.
Okay, what um you said there were changes that were made or adjustments that were made. Can you speak to those? And are you planning to provide those at least to the board, so we know what positions were adjusted and how they were adjusted?
Uh, we can. So there were, for example, we noticed um you know, some aid position, well, that too, yeah. So there were some adjustments made to um some of the director, um also for some of the trustee aides. We noticed for some reason, some um aides got a higher adjustment and some didn't. I think it was like a nineteen point five versus the eighteen. So we adjusted everybody to get the nineteen point five. Uh, we also made some adjustments related to um one of the concerns that that um Ms. Myers had brought up. So that was addressed by Rochelle and I think Summer had also worked on some of that. But even with some of those adjustments, we did look at it and there were some I think we just oversight, so we had to, you know, make it more consistent. Um, tho- those are some, but we can give a list of.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. I mean, you know, we deliberately itemized every position in our budget um in full public transparency to show what the um salary fringe, total cost to the core um would be on an annual basis and then calculated what a performance-based merit-based increase would be based on a three percent or five percent merit-based increase. So if if I'm a OHA staff member, I'm looking at those numbers and and hopefully it's encouraging me to um, you know, do very well on my performance evaluations, so that I can potentially earn that uh you know, minimum three percent merit-based increase next year. So knowing which positions were adjusted in its final form, I think would be very, very helpful. So just so everyone's clear, August, first week August, everything should be
The August fifth payroll.
August fifth payroll. Okay, you heard it from Cory, everyone. August fifth. Nobody's clapping. Come on, Nathan, you can clap that in that. Okay, golf clap, golf clap. Trustees, any questions uh for Cory? It seems pretty straightforward. Great job, Cory. No? Okay, great. Um, all right. Okay, so we are gonna take a recess. We're gonna reconvene. Vice Chair, thirty minutes? Sure, right after one or one? One o'clock. Okay, so we're gonna recess at one twenty-five minutes. Okay, and trustees, before we proceed, I'd like to inform the board that I will be absent for the remainder of today's meeting. Um, pursuant to Article Six, Section B of the OHA Bylaws in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards, the Vice Chair will assume the duties of the Chair for the balance of the meeting. Namahalo you for all your continued work and I will leave the meeting in I know very, very capable hands. So at this time, we're gonna take a recess. We'll reconvene at one o'clock um for the remainder of our agenda, which will include the evaluation of OHA Administrator Stacy K. Ferreira for the period from November first The evaluation of OHA Administrator Stacy K. Ferreira for the period from November first, twenty twenty three to October thirty first, twenty twenty four.